Welcome to tonight's Planning and Zoning meeting. Can we have a roll call of the Commissioners, please?
Just one second. Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner Clayton?
Here.
Commissioner Depler just came in on Zoom.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Commissioner Rubus?
Here.
Chair Beatty? Commissioner Hope?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Boren?
I'm here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Marshall?
Present.
And Mayor Garitano?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, can we have an approval of the minutes from October 6?
It's moved.
Councilmember Marshall, do we have a second? Commissioner Clayton? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstain? Okay, thank you. We're going to review the agenda. Okay. We have two public hearings. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then we have three. Four letters of recommendation and three information reports. Mr. Boonich, Justice Department, do you have any opening remarks?
Well, we'd just like to thank Mr. Pryor for stepping in tonight in John Young's place. So he will be providing us legal counsel. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right now, we have the public comment session. These are public comments on the active agenda items. These are not on the public hearing items. Mr. Newberry, do we have any speaker cards?
Madam Chair, we have one speaker card of the public comment session. It's Ms. Sheerholtz.
I would like to know.
We have your name and address, please.
Sure. Lisa Sheerholtz, 967 North Guyer, Kirkwood, Missouri, 63122. I just wanted to say good evening and let you know that I'm here in person if you have any questions. And my daughter-in-law will be here soon, and they live on.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Newberry?
No additional speaker cards for any item that's not included under the public hearing. So no additional speaker cards in the public comment session.
Okay, so then we should move on to the public hearings. In the City of Wildwood, public hearings are truly intended to accept comments and questions concerning these posted items. Since these requests are being presented at a public hearing, no action is planned on these items tonight, and consideration of them is to be taken no earlier than the December 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This approach ensures the members of the Commission will hear all opinions before taking any action. The City's Department of Planning will address the comments, questions, and concerns that are raised tonight and include them as part of its formal recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Anyone in attendance at City Hall tonight wanting to speak should fill out a speaker's card and leave it with Mr. Newberry. Those in attendance via the Zoom webinar platform should use the raise hand feature to indicate you wish to speak at this hearing. A team member will add you to the list of speakers, which will then be communicated to me and as Chair, I will invite you to speak when it is your turn. The public hearing process is outlined in Public Hearings Guidelines pamphlet, which can be found on the table at the entry area to the council chambers. The Commission will allow all parties adequate time to present their position. As outlined in the Public Hearings Guidelines pamphlet, those individuals representing themselves will be allocated three minutes to speak. Speakers who are designated as a group speaker, representing a group of more than five individuals, will be allocated five minutes to speak. In addition, information on these items can be found on the City's website at www.cityofwildwood.com. The Commission would like to thank you for your cooperation and participation in tonight's hearings. Okay. Mr. Boonich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, the first public hearing tonight is PC 10-25 Luxury Villas at Latitude N38, Care of Latitude N38 LLC, 11605 Stute Avenue, Suite 102, Creek Court, Missouri, 63141. A request for a change in zoning from the NU Non-Urban Resident District to the R6A 4,000 square foot resident district, Town Center Neighborhood General District, for a 6.9 acre tract of land that is located at the southeast corner of Etherington Road and Crestview Drive. Locator numbers: 23V 210140, 23V 2110151, 23V 210021, and 23V 220022. Street addresses: 2442, 2448, and 2454 Etherington Road, and 16928 Crestview Drive. These particular properties are located in Ward 8. And PC 11-25 Luxury Villas at Latitude N38, Care of Latitude N38 LLC, 11605 Stute Avenue, Suite 102, Creek Court, Missouri, 63141. A request for a planned residential development overlay district, PRD, in the R6A 4,000 square foot resident district, Town Center Neighborhood General District, for the same 6.9 acre tract of land that is located at the southeast corner of Etherington Road and Crestview Drive. Locator numbers: 23V 210140, 23V 2110151, 23V 210021, and 23V 220022. Street addresses: 2442, 2448, 2454 Etherington Road, and 16928 Crestview Drive. Proposed uses: A total of a maximum of 44 single-family attached dwellings in clusters of 3 and 4 and 6 units, along with associated street and pedestrian network, off-street parking areas, required public space, and stormwater management facilities. Again, these three properties are located in Ward 8. Madam Chair, Mr. Newberry will do a brief slide presentation now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boonich. Mr. Newberry?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Department's slide presentation is just to provide a reminder of the location of the property as well as the way it looks today. The property is located to the west of City Hall. It's highlighted in red here. Slide is just a little closer up identifying the Village Green property and City Hall where we're at today. And this is the preliminary development plan that the petitioner will present on at the conclusion of the Department's presentation. The next are just a series of photographs. This is standing at the southwest corner of the site, looking south onto Etherington Road. Standing at the same location, looking to the north, the houses you see on Etherington Road to your left is Main Street Crossing subdivision. This is a little further down Etherington Road to the north. This is where an intersection of an alley of Main Street Crossing with Etherington Road cross from the subject site. And then the next is standing at the corner of Main Street, Crestview Drive, and Etherington Road, looking to the west on Main Street as it goes towards 109. This is standing at that same corner, looking to the north. You can see some development activity there with some, one of two new homes that have been approved by the city. And then this is at that same corner, looking towards the south. Again, Main Street Crossing is to your right in the photograph. And this is standing at that same intersection, looking toward the east on Crestview Drive. The subject property is in the right-hand side of the photograph with the garage and a portion of the home. And this is standing further east on Crestview Drive, kind of more towards the Village Greens, closer to the Village Green site than the subject site, but it gives a good view of Crestview Drive. And then this is standing at the corner of the proposed development site, looking to the west on Crestview Drive. What you see in the photograph is all the subject site to the south of Crestview Drive. And the next is just a series of photographs of the existing dwellings that are on the properties that make up the subject site. This is on Crestview Drive, standing again at that same location I just described in the previous slide. This is the home at the corner of Etherington and Crestview Drive, and then moving south down the street, the existing dwellings on the site. And with that, that concludes the Department's brief presentation. And as Mr. Boonich intended, I think the petitioners are in attendance to provide a presentation.
And Madam Chair, under the rules of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the petitioner has up to 15 minutes to present their proposals. And then thereafter, the public. The Department will provide you an acknowledgement when one minute is left.
Okay, thank you. Would the petitioner like to speak?
Yes, thank you. My name is Mike Doster, 16150 Main Circle Drive in Chesterville, Missouri. I'm a land use attorney on the development team for the petitioner. And I have a few opening comments. Dave Vols, who's on the team, will present the plan in detail. Tony Bosworth is here. He's the developer. William Levinson with Benton Homes is the home builder. As I mentioned, Dave Vols is the civil engineer on this project. I'm new to the history of this site, and we have a new plan, which Dave will present. Quick summary of the history of the site in terms of attempts to develop it. Originally, there was a plan presented with 12 lots that was denied by council in July of 2021. Another plan was submitted showing 65 lots, and I believe that was recommended to be denied by the Planning Commission in December of 2023. There was another plan after that showing 55 lots, and that was denied by council earlier this year, April 2025. The current plan shows 44 lots. As I mentioned, Dave will present the plan. He'll also present changes from the previously denied plan, the one showing 55 lots. We understood that there were various reasons for the denial, and we've addressed every one of those reasons, we believe. And so he'll detail those for you when he presents the plan. We believe the current plan complies with all of the city's requirements. And at the end of the process in front of you, we would ask that you recommend approval of this plan. So with that, I'll introduce Dave, and he'll take you through the plan. But we're both available to answer questions.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good evening. My name is David Vols. I'm with Vols Engineering, and our address is 10849 Indian Head, 63132. And I know that everyone's pretty familiar with the site. But I just want to present what we're doing here. So this is an aerial. Site there is 8 point, sorry, 6.86 acres. And Old Etherington is up and down, and then Crestview Drive is to the north of our site. And our site is actually made up of four parcels. And you can see Village Green, which is the city property to the east, and then the City Hall further. And again, the northern road, which is Crestview, there's actually seven parcels of property on the north side of Crestview, and there's five on the south. So two of them are owned on the south side. Two of them are owned by the city, and the other three along Crestview are part of this development. So between the city and us, we control all the properties from City Hall all the way to Old Etherington Road. The site actually falls to the east, and I just wanted to point that out. So the western side, from the western Old Etherington all the way to where Village Green is, it's about 20 feet of fall, and it's pretty much all that direction. So if you would change to the site plan, the site plan is right here. There's 44 lots, and they're all fee simple lots. So this isn't a condo development. These are all on fee simple lots. The road pattern you see there, it's 40-foot right-of-way and 26-foot of pavement. The garages are all off the internal street. So each one of those units has a garage that comes off that internal street with two car garages and also two spaces in the driveway for each one of those. And in addition to that, along that long elongated cul-de-sac that you see there, we put off-street parking, because I know parking was one of the issues on the other plan. So there's actually 11 spaces there that are in addition to the four that go with each home. And then actually, if you go over to Etherington Road, there's also going to be, I think, five or six parallel spaces that'll be on Etherington Road. So there's going to be a lot of additional parking. In fact, that cul-de-sac there would be sufficient to even add more parking. But we had 11 extra places there. So one of the other things is we were trying to get a larger buffer to the east, to the park. And with this layout, the detention obviously is on the low spot. So the detention separates our development and the park. And it's 100 feet now from the backs of those units to the property line with the park. Another issue there were walls, because if you remember, originally that was a walled detention basin. And because we have more room now by spreading it out, there are no walls. There are some walls on the eastern side of one of those basins, but you will not see them from the park. So we were able to eliminate that by just basically spreading that area out. Another area of concern was always the separation between us and the southern border along Etherington there. So right now, we have 83 feet from those units. I can't see the numbers, but from those units down to the southern property line is 83 feet. And also that area right there, that is common ground area. So we've added a half acre of common ground in that area. I mentioned the 11 spaces that we added as well. One other thing I wanted to point out is along the northern property line, you see that gray area? That whole strip, there's a 37-foot strip of property along the entire northern area that we're dedicating that would allow and sufficient for the future Main Street expansion. So we're giving enough right-of-way for that to be done and completed in the future. And then we're building, the gray area is what we're building of Main Street, and that's about 205 feet of Main Street to get to that entrance right there. In addition to that, there's also 12 feet of right-of-way dedication for Old Etherington along the western side. And that's going to mirror what you see on the other side of the road with the parallel spaces. So what you see on the other side is mirrored there, and we're giving enough dedication to do that as well. And the entrance off of Old Etherington, that is a right-in, right-out. So people going north on Old Etherington could go in and then come out, and they'd have to go north when they pull out with this layout. One of the things that, this is a vast difference from some of the previous plans that you saw. And I want to do a comparison of the last plan. So the last plan that you saw was a 50, not you, but the last plan that the City Council saw was a 55-unit plan. And this is it. I had plenty of plans to choose from, because at one time, we had one that had 65 lots. And then we did a revision. It had a little commercial piece in the northeast, if you remember. Then we revised that to a 60-lot layout. And then we took away all the pieces along Etherington or Main Street up there. And after many, 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 many changes, we got down to this plan, which was the last one that was considered by the City Council. And you can see from this plan, just some of the differences. Along the southern border, which was an area of concern, you can see that our units there are pretty close to the southern border. And we now have a half acre of common ground there. And then on the east, where the detention basin is in, that is about 25 feet further away to those units, and those are no longer walled basins. So this is the plan that was the last one that was considered. And if you go to the chart, I'm going to show you this chart of the changes we made. So first, the number of units. The current plan that you have before you is a 44-unit plan. The last one that was considered, the previous plan, had 55 units. So we have an 11-unit reduction, which is a 20% reduction from the last plan that you saw. And the plan that was presented before had 60 units, so it's about a 25% reduction. So it's a significant reduction in the number of units. The Main Street dedication is actually the same. So this is sufficient dedication for the Main Street plan that you have. And the other plan was as well. Parking spaces. So both plans had two spaces in the garage, two spaces in the driveway. This plan, though, I know one of the comments was there wasn't enough overflow parking. So this plan now has 11 additional spaces. So that comes out to 4.25 if you count the four that's assigned to each unit. There's 4.25 spaces now for every unit here. Plus, that's not counting the six additional spaces that are on Old Etherington Road. So there's lots of parking now. And like I said, the cul-de-sac, you could actually add more, but at some point, you are just paving for no reason. So the buffer to the south. So the current plan is 83 feet of buffer plus a half acre of common ground area. Previously, the closest unit to that southern line was 20 feet. It was 20 feet. And if you remember, we had a fire drive, which was pretty much, you know, just a few feet off the property line. So now, there's nothing, no hard surface at all within 83 feet of the southern property line, which is also going to affect the drainage down there. So that's a significant change. Common ground. This plan has 1.8 acres of common ground, which is basically 30% of the site. So 30% of the site is now common ground. And when you see that color rendering, which will pop back up here in a second, that's the area around the lots. That's not counted in that, because they are fee simple lots. That's just the common ground, 30% of the site. Previous plan had 1.2 acres, so we've increased the common ground by 0.6 acres. And that's basically 50% increase over the amount of common ground we had before. So that's a pretty significant change, and I know that was important. And then the last thing I wanted to address here was the coverage. So I calculated the amount of pavement, the amount of streets, and the hard surface like that. And in that, we've reduced that by 0.3 acres, which, again, it's a small site, so we've reduced the pavement by 0.3 acres. And by reducing the number of homes and number of driveways that are associated with that, we've reduced that paving by half an acre. So this site has 0.8, almost an acre less coverage, which translates into less stormwater, obviously. So that's a significant decrease and a significant change that we've made to this plan as well. If you go back to the, so these are the renderings. Go to the renderings. Sorry. So this is just a representative rendering. So we don't have all the renderings done for all of the units, but I just wanted you to see these. So these are brick. Some of them are bricks, some of them are stone. They all have porches on them. This would be from a Main Street view, but they have porches on them with steps coming up. They have projections that go around them. If you go to a couple more slides here. Okay, so you can see how the porches are set back, and there's bump outs on them. And if you go one more, you can really see the different, how it undulates back in and out. And I think they look pretty good. I was really pleased with these renderings. And then there's one rendering from the internal area. So this is the internal area where the garages will be. So that's the renderings. And that, so you go back to the site plan, and that's pretty much that I have to say. So if you have any questions, I can answer them, or maybe Mike has something else he wants to close with.
Commissioner Rubus?
Just a point of, I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me? Okay. Just a point of order. Is the 15 minutes up already that we can begin discussion, or?
The petitioner has about two and a half minutes left, if they wanted to use that time. Otherwise, if you want to open it for questions, that's fine, too.
Yeah, we just check to see if the petitioner is done with their presentation before we get into questions.
Yeah, we're done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rubus?
The detention areas, are those dry basins?
They are dry.
And what's, are, is each unit similar in square foot?
The size of the unit?
Yeah.
There's actually.
In bigger sizes?
What we're showing right there is two different types of units. And I don't actually know the square footage of the units.
But they do differ.
1,200, 1,500, and 2,000 square feet.
So you have three different? All two-story?
No. No, I think those units that are on the south are one-story units.
The tenants, who will be required to pay for trash removal? Is that covered by the developer, or is that covered by each individual tenant?
That's a community thing. The trash is a community thing. So each person will, I think, put a trash can out and.
Yes, but I mean, as far as paying the bill, whose responsibility is it to pay a trash company for trash removal?
I think that, you know, it depends how it's set up. The Cambari subdivision, they have one centralized bill that is paid for by the HOA, and therefore, they manage it that way.
I understand here, it's the residents. Each resident will pay.
Ultimately, it is occupants, the residents, that do pay for that service there. But yeah, are you asking about if it's an individual by home payment?
Right, right.
Somebody doesn't pay, they don't collect their trash.
That typically is, yeah, what happens in the city, you know.
The other thing, my last question is, is there, as far as landscaping and all that, that's covered by the owners, not the tenants? Cutting the grass, trimming the things, planting flowers, putting in the landscape or anything like that? That's all extraneous to a tenant.
That is correct.
All he does is use the space to live.
Correct.
That's all.
Any other questions, comments up here? Mr. Rubus, Mr. Newberry, do you have any speaker cards?
Mr. Boren, actually, Commissioner Boren just raised his hand.
Thank you. Commissioner Boren?
Councilmember Marshall raises his hand as well.
Okay.
Yeah, hello. I've just got a few questions. So these units, they're going to be owned, or they're rental units?
They're all owned by the developer-owner of the property. They will be rented to tenants.
Okay, so this is a rental facility, not, this is not a condominium where people own individual condos. It'll be for rental, like an apartment.
That's correct.
Dash, all apartment-type complex, okay.
And I suppose the one technical difference is what was pointed out by Dave Vols. Each unit is on its own lot. These are all fee lots.
What?
It's owned by the developer-owner.
Okay, what significance does that bring?
In terms of whether it's rental or owned by the tenant who occupies the unit?
If it's rental, then how, I've heard you mention fee simple a few times. How does that play into a rental arrangement?
It doesn't affect the rental.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes, two quick questions then. Because they are fee simple, they could be sold off individually in 10 years from now, five years from now. Each property could be sold if the market would turn around.
Technically, that's correct.
Thanks. My second question is, Mr. Newberry, can we go back to the layout? I've had a question about where the road is. It seems to me that there's 14 units there, but the road is cut in at four. So if you had 16, why wouldn't the road be like around eight or nine to divide to commit instead of having it that far down? It just, it seems like it's impractical for the other people on the east side to have a road that's like two units in instead of coming in halfway through the longer strip, have the same distance, but you could say put it between units 10 and 11 instead of between four and five.
Do you like me to address that?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's lots of moving parts with this road. Whether you should put it here, whether you could put it further down, whether the grades are going to work, where it connects. One of the concerns that I've always had with this is the detention basin, this is maybe too technical, but the detention basin has to have an outfall. So what sets that road elevation is the detention basin, then the water quality, and then the road. Meanwhile, you have Etherington Road down here. So there is a limit to how far I can go down and get that connection to work. So again, there's a lot of moving parts. I think there's moving parts with when the city can acquire other property, when, how much of the road do you want built? Because I know there's a plan out there that has a one-way this way and one-way this way. So there's so many moving parts, and I feel like we, but I can meet with the staff and talk about it.
I just think that, when you just look at it, seems to me the road would be further to the east, would make it a little more. I, I just think that when you just look at it, seems to me the road would be further to the east, would make a little more sense. No strong opinion, I just thought it would look kind of lopsided. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Newberry?
It looks like, it's hard to see from your angle, but Mr. Ms. Depler, Mr. Lee and Ms.
Mr. Depler?
Hi, I just had a quick question. So looking at the rendering, it looks like lots like 29, 30, 31. They're looking at the side of 33. It just seems like kind of a, a strange setup of those particular lots. And, you know, how they're facing essentially the side of another building. Any concerns about that and being able to, you know, sell those as units for people to be interested in?
No concern at all. This happens in every subdivision you do on a corner lot, where you have the back of one house against another house. Happens on every subdivision, every corner lot. So it's, that's not a concern.
Yeah, it looks, it looks more to the extreme on those particular lots, but just thought I would highlight that because it seems kind of strange since they're not facing the road.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boren?
Yeah, just, just a follow-up to my question earlier. Since you clarified that the purpose of the fee simple lot ownership is to have the option to sell these units in the future, what would be required between you and the city and between you and I guess just how the legal structure would be set up to do so? I mean, the only time I'm, I've seen these sorts of facilities for sale was usually under a condominium structure, since there's common walls between those units, common shared roofs and, and so on. So could you, could you walk me through how that would work if in the future you wanted to carve these off and sell them as individual units?
Well, that's not the business concept now, so we really haven't looked at that. The technical question that was asked earlier was, could you in the future sell a fee simple lot? And technically that is possible, but that's not our business model, so we haven't looked at it.
Okay, it just seemed that y'all have mentioned it a few times, so I assume there was a purpose behind mentioning that these were fee simple lots and not structured otherwise.
Right. It's the flexibility, but we haven't looked at selling any of these lots.
Okay, so, so to our chair, if we, if we're doing a, if we approve this, what, what would be required between the developer and the city if this changed from a rental to a sellable situation?
Well, I, I will defer to Mr. Vunich and let him answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Boren, a lot of it will have to do how the conditions, if this is the planning, it's in the condition are fashioned. Certainly with the simple for this particular item tonight, the discussions of trying to manage how the leasing would go forward, how rentals might occur, notification to the city. So as we get a little further into this, if there is a favorable vote, we can certainly look into the, the mechanics of that and bring in our city attorney to assist.
Thank you.
Mr. Lee, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you so much, Chair. I just wanted to quickly point out that it's something that we'd like the Department of Public Works, Department of Administration, have wanted to coordinate to potentially move that, that entryway off of the future Main Street further down. So that is something that has been discussed. Typically would be, what we were looking at was between lots 15 and 16, was something that was pushed forward. So we'll still continue to have those conversations. And the only other thing I wanted to point out was just the dispersment of water from those retention areas, water retention areas. So that will go on to the City Park property, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Rubus, did you have something? Okay, well, I'll take this one. So I have a couple of questions for you. First of all, you continually mentioned that you said there was about 85 feet between the houses and the southern property. And then, but I'm looking at this unit number 27, and it looks to be right up against the property. So I don't see
You're right, I, I meant that mast.
Could you say that louder so my husband could hear that?
You are correct. You're, you're correct. I, I was, I was speaking specifically about those, the ones that had come off that road, but unit 27 is, is closer than that.
So how close is unit 27?
Probably, I'm going to say 15 feet or so.
15 feet?
Yeah.
So I, I guess I would, I would question how, if that's too close to the property line, that it would cause runoff issues for the adjoining property? And I don't know what the build line is, I don't know, I'm just bringing that up. Another question I had was, I see on my drawing, I have notes all over it, and it, one of the drawings is, actually the one up on the TV screen would be fine. From the detention basins, you have an arm shooting out and it's on property that isn't yours. And I'm just wondering what those things are from the two detention basins?
Yeah, those are the discharge that Tom was, was talking about. That's discharge pipe from the, the detention basin.
So it, it would discharge onto somebody else's property, on the city's property?
Correct, with this, with this layout, it would.
Okay, and then my last question was, previously when this property came in front of us before, one of the questions that we struggled with was the HOA. And who was going to be responsible for this property? Because there was not going to be somebody living there that was going to be responsible for making, making sure that the property was maintained and, and, and kept up. So I, I'd like for you to address that if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, I want to address this runoff.
One of them, sure.
Yeah, so, so whenever we're doing development like this, we have to catch the water and run it through our, our water quality basin if it's coming off of a hard surface. So there's always been, even the other plan, there was a plan to catch the water and run it through the, the water quality. So the other plan wasn't going to increase the stormwater going to the south. But this plan, there's actually a couple of inlets right there by unit 27 that takes that water into that, that oval thing that you see there, it looks like a racetrack. That's actually the water quality basin. So it's going to go into there and then it leaves there and then goes into the regular detention basin.
Well, I would tell you from my own personal experience with water runoff at my home, right? So I'm, I'm, I just am always cognizant of somebody's water running off onto somebody else's property. And so that's the city's property and that's by, by, then if it's the city's property, then it's my property too. So that's
Water is going there now, and the way, the way it always works is, the reason you put the detention basin is you meter the water out, but, but you discharge the water in the same, the same watershed that it was going to currently. So again, that's like a ridge that comes off. So some of the water is going to north, some of it's going to south, so that's where the water is going right now. And what we're doing is we're detaining it so that it's not going at a greater rate, which is the same thing we do at, at every development that we do, every community we do, so.
Well, that was, going forward, I would just like to, maybe, maybe you can kind of give us a little bit more numbers and explain that a little bit more. I would be grateful for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will tell you, this has to go through the city and we're in MSD's district here, so we have to go through MSD also on, on this for the stormwater.
Chair, can I speak?
Well, he was gonna answer, you were gonna answer the other question I had about the HOA and somebody not living on the property and being responsible and maintaining property.
Be an HOA as such. All the property, all the units will be owned by the owner developer. And so the owner developer will have responsibility to take care of everything.
And so when there's a problem with the out, the exterior of the property, who would the city contact for that?
The owner developer.
Okay.
Right, you'll have
Be a person?
Yeah, you'll have contact information.
All right, thank you, sir. Mayor Garitano?
Thank you. Can you hear me all right? Okay, great. Yeah, my, my question or comments really do pertain to those detention basins that are on the far eastern edge of the property. Because as the acting chair tonight mentioned, we have the city's village green there. That, that's a place where people are going to use as a park.
Sure.
And you're channeling water and sending it there. I mean, it's like, how would you like it if we channeled the water from Etherington Road into your subdivision? You wouldn't like that.
So that's where the water goes now?
You're not piping it through, though.
We're, we're discharging it in the same, in the same watershed, the same ba- basic location that it's going for right now.
You're telling me there's a pipe there today?
No, there, there's no pipe.
So you're putting a pipe now that's going to flow water into that field?
And it's sheet flowing that direction right now?
Well, I think that's a crazy idea. I don't think that makes any sense at all. I would, I would fight that because you're going to damage property and also damage the future of what we're going to use on that side of the village green.
And that is not our goal at all, and this is
What doesn't look good? I mean, either that or you got to build bigger detention basins to hold more water.
Well, we, we can, we can look at that, but I can, I can guarantee you our goal is not to destroy the park because that's a huge asset to us. And this is how it's commonly done, but I will look at options and looks at, look at ways that we can, we can make this acceptable to the city. That is not our, it's not our desire to do something here that, that hurts, hurts the city at all.
I mean, I'm not aware, I'm not, I haven't seen where, where we have one subdivision that channels water into another. But if that happened, and again, I say specifically channeling water like this, this outfall. I mean, I understand that there is, you know, just a natural flow of water across grass or whatever terrain there is. But when you have these detention basins and we have a very heavy rainfall event, that water is then going to start flowing into what is the village green. And that will cause damage to the city's property.
Sure, I, I'd be happy to sit down with your city engineer and, and talk to him about this. I think this is commonly done and I think we could work, work through this with them.
I mean, I've seen it where it's done, where it's channeled into, let's say, a creek that's adjoining the property. But I don't see that anywhere where we did that in the adjoining subdivisions there that we channeled water from one subdivision to another. So I think usually the detention basins are built enough that they can hold the water for those significant rainfall events, not send it overflowing.
And that's what we're, we're designing this to do. And then eventually, though, the basin has to discharge. And if we have to go down to wherever that location is, I actually don't, I, I've looked at those plans, but I'm not familiar with them as, as I stand here. But wherever that connection is, because at some point you're collecting the water and taking it into the underground basin that, that the park has. If we have to go and connect into that storm sewer system that's doing that, that, that's a possibility. And then, then you wouldn't see the discharge. So there's, there's ways that we can, we can work that out. And I'd be more than happy to think that through a little more and talk to the city staff. But I think that we can deal with that.
Yeah, because otherwise, I mean, you have to get a
Totally understand.
Runoff system like many subdivisions have had around here where they collect the water and then it goes into the piping that then eventually takes it to a nearby creek.
Yeah.
I don't see that here. I mean, I'm concerned too with the property that's right adjoining there. I mean, you got one that's channeling right to where it says Hayes, Larry and Diane and their property right there is just about a foot or two from that. That, you know, I guess where that outfall is what you call it.
Now, you need to remember, this is the preliminary plan, there's been zero design actually done on the, the flow, which, which you've asked for more information. So, so, you know, we've sized the basins, but we haven't run any hydraulic calculations on them at this point. But I, I understand what you're saying and I think we can address that.
Then the other question, it's, I appreciate that you did listen to the feedback on parking. It looks like you added some parking spaces there. But the only other thing, and I would ask, really this is my question for his director Vunich. You know, when we have developments, I've always understood it that they're responsible for the frontage, a development of the frontage along their development there. So have we ever had anything like this where we're not going to require that, that frontage? That's not along the future Main Street there?
The requirement is the dedication of land area to accommodate the design of the proposed road plus construction of half of the improvements. And so from this perspective, they're showing the full dedication, but only a partial construction. The only other alternative is we still require the construction per se, but we collect an escrow to construct later in conjunction with another project, whether it be city or private. So yes, the construction component is just approximately 200 feet versus the length of the site, which is in the range of almost 750 feet.
And then the other thing, I believe what the director of public works may have raised previously is those two roads that do connect one to a portion of the future Main Street and then the other one to Etherington Road. I believe we had concerns that they were too close to that intersection of Main and Etherington. So I'm assuming I'll look for what the department feels regarding that when you prepare the information report.
Certainly consult with our Department of Public Works. But I do want to identify that the right in, right out from the internal street that's proposed as part of this development onto Etherington Road is intended by the Department of Planning to reduce trips. A fully functional intersection may end up directing more traffic south onto Etherington Road than to Main Street. And so again, it's some attempt to recognize that Etherington Road isn't as capable of a street as Main Street that goes through Main Street Crossing.
That, that makes sense, and thank you for that. That's all I have to say, thank you.
I see Mr. Lee, but before I call on you, Mr. Lee, Mr. Vunich, I have a question. This, they, the gentleman that was speaking said that unit 27 is 15 feet off of the property line. What is that? How, how close are they allowed to be building next to your property line?
Along the perimeter of the property, unless there's a separation by common ground, the more restrictive setback, in this case a side yard setback would apply. And generally in the R6A 4,000 square foot resident district, the worst case scenario is anywhere from six to eight feet. So it appears they're doing more than what would be required even along the perimeter of the property. We'll verify that for the planning and zoning commission, as the mayor said, when we prepare our information report with recommendation.
Okay, well, when they, when they come back, I would like to see where the sidewalks are that lead to the fronts of the houses, especially on the sides of the houses that front to the detention. Are they detention or retention bonds? Which are they? Detention?
Detention, they're not.
So I, I'd like to see how that's going to look because I, I mean, I don't know if I would want my house to, the front door to look out on one. But that's, I'm not, that's, that has, doesn't have anything to do with it. And then I would like more information on the, the water, where it shoots out because I, I'm not in favor of dumping out water on anybody else's property.
Certainly, in most of the cases, we don't see the discharge from the basins dividing onto adjoining properties. Typically, you see them being connected to other developments where the existing network of pipes and air and curb inlets exist. Regardless, they need an easement to access the city's property and that easement has to be granted by city council.
Okay, and, and I just, but the other thing I was going to ask, I know that this, the street, would that be a public street when it's done, when it's dedicated after it's been built?
Yes, all streets in town center are intended to be public.
Okay, so then that street there, whatever that is called, Whereth Avenue, I guess, would that have any parking available on it?
Under this revised design, I believe they've removed the on-street spaces to the benefit of those 11 spaces they've shown now in the common ground island.
Okay, and then where would the mailbox do, will we have a common mailbox?
Yes, it'll be a cluster box and it's on the southern end of that large cul-de-sac oval.
I see it. Good, all right, thank you, Mr. Vunich. And Mr. Lee, did you want anything else?
Yes, I, Mr. Vunich covered this briefly, but just wanted to reinforce that the easement, an easement would be needed for the discharge pipes that would go on to the village green site and that would have to be approved by council. The other component I just wanted to mention here is that the city is currently under the process for engineering and designing its all-inclusive playground. And it's right where, it's right next, the site of that playground is right next to one of those discharge pipes. This is good, that engineering effort is going to take a lot of work with MSD since it will have a decent amount of impervious surface. And I don't think we have the capacity at the underground stormwater tanks that we have currently. So that said, there's, it's almost as if, if this development were to move forward, it's going to need to be closely coordinating, not only with the Main Street extension project that the city has planned, which would be something to push forward, to have that connection pushed further. not only with the main street extension project that the city has planned, which would be something to push forward to have that connection pushed further to the east. And then secondly, um, coordinating to make sure that stormwater control and stormwater mitigation efforts are put in place to tie all three projects together, considering that the village green will be the premier site here in town center that we're trying to promote as a city. So just wanted to add that in and add in the fact that that easement will be needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah. So I remember when this came up the first time, I was very much engaged, asked a lot of questions. I just have one. And I've read through the documents, saw the presentation. What has signif-, what in your opinion is the biggest, the top maybe one or two significant changes you made? That would make us reverse our decision of the last no vote? What, what would you say is the biggest thing for me? I'm, I'm trying to figure out what less residents or less rentals, 55 to 45 or whatever it was.
Yeah. Originally it was 65. So, uh, that's a significant, significant reduction in the amount of units. I mean, it went from the, the last plan that was before the council was 55. You guys, I think had a 58 and this is a 44 unit plan. That's, that's 20, 25% reduction in the number of units. In addition, there's quite a bit, and because of that, there's a lot more common ground. There's a lot more, um, there's a lot less or almost an acre less of paved area. So, and the concern, the separation from the property owner to the south. I mean, now that's 83 feet. And I would point out that where you're talking about that one unit that is close, the house is, is, uh, is way up by Etherington Road. So I mean, this is really far back from where any residents would actually be. So, but it's, it's a significant reduction in the number of units, uh, the amount of pervious or impervious surface. And we've added a lot of common ground, half acre of common ground to buffer the area to the south. So if you look around the whole thing, where, where we border other, other than roads to the south, we have this half acre, 83 feet and to the east to going over the park, we have a hundred feet. I know that's where the detention basin is, but it's a low area, but the concern was, well, that we have a walled detention basin, which we no longer have. I mean, if I built a wall basin, maybe I could bring that pipe back onto my own property, but we didn't want to do that. So this, this is, it's going to look a lot better from the park. We, at one time we had a drive going up next between the, the backside of those units. That's no longer there. So I think there's been a lot of improvement over the course of time. You know, the amount of parking, that was, that was a concern and we added 11 spaces. We could add more along that road and we could even add more in the, in the cul-de-sac, but at some point, you know, how, how much more additional parking do you want to put in? And maybe we want to put in more. I don't know. That was a, but we could do that if you, if you wanted more parking for the residents, overflow parking, there's, there's ability to do that. So.
You answered exactly. I needed a good summary.
Okay.
And you did it. And we, you went step by step. I just needed the summary so I could understand it. Thank you.
Mr. Newberry, do we have any public speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, the first speaker is Mr. Comer.
Hello, my name is Tim Comer. I live at 2460 Etherington Road. I am the immediate property facing this development. And I want to touch base real quick on erosion. I can a hundred percent tell you that this will cause erosion to my property. It's all grass back there now. And I have lots of erosion. I've lost at least two feet of property running down the middle of my backyard. I've lost a tree that was 50 years old because of erosion. It just eroded it right out of the ground and it became, comes from next door. I've even put in a French drain system to stop the water and, and on heavy rain days, you can see it just pumping it, taking it from these fields over here. And let me just give you a little idea on what this looks like here. This is, on one side was Main Street. They developed an old farm property. That makes sense. It was one giant piece of property. On the other side, these are all one to three acre lots. And here, this guy has slowly accumulated these rental houses. And now he wants to dump in 40 homes, 44 homes. That's crazy. You're ruining my property. You're ruining every aspect of my property, every view, out my front window, out my side window, out my backyard. Now we'll be full of lighting. I'll see all these homes. Hopefully they still put the fence if this ever gets approved. But there's so many bigger topics here. There's a property, not even a fourth of a mile down the street, three acre lot. Went through planning and zoning. And they wanted to build, I think at one point 11 and then nine and then eight and they said no. And so now there's three houses on that three acres and they kept in line with the way the street looks. And this just ruins it. And Etherington Road is an old road. It can't take it and it surely can't take any on-street parking for this development.
One minute.
It's impossible and it's impossible for me to conquer every aspect of this, but how far, how, what is the setback of these driveways? Uh, is it 20 feet minimum? I thought that all developments in the city of Wildwood would have to mimic the other side. So there's no front-facing houses on Etherington. So these poor people in Main Street that bought houses, now they'll look at the side of a building. You know, and we defeated this. And one thing I want to touch on, we shouldn't even be here today because we defeated this in planning and zoning twice. We defeated it at city council. And it was a big deal. The news was there. The city attorney, Mr. Young paused with Joe, with Mr. Vunich. And they all took a five-minute break, read through all the documents and they said, okay, he cannot come back for one year and present or build anything. Here we are, three months later. The city lied to me. The city lied to every resident of our city.
Thank you.
If the city attorney is wrong, then he should be fired.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Newberry?
Next speaker is Ms. Link.
Lynn Link, Ward six. Here we are only a few months into the required one-year post-final denial waiting period with the same developer, same parcel, now with different luxury name with 44 units. The developer previously argued 55 was the minimum units to make the numbers work. I want to remind the commission that density was not the only issue with this proposed development. Benton Home Builders has several rentals already in St. Charles County where there have been numerous complaints from former residents about parking issues as well as poor construction and poor maintenance. Whether 55 or 44 units, water runoff is already an issue for nearby homeowners with some of the homes on our historic preservation list. Even the best water abatement procedures cannot stop all water runoff. The houses which would be, need to be demolished were built from 1949 to 1973 with asbestos and insulation, brick and mortar adhesives, drywall, roofing and flooring. Demolition poses a threat to all nearby residents as asbestos fibers once disturbed can travel over a mile. As proper asbestos removal can be cost prohibitive for any project, the city should require the developer to submit the DNR asbestos abatement report and plan prior to any approval. Parking is now more of an issue with the recent approval of the nearby Wildwood Luxury Rentals, a one, two and three bedroom, 188 unit with multi, a multi-story complex, which allowed a reduction of the required per-unit parking. The developer was told that their tenants and their visitors can park on our streets in our public garage. Reduction of tax revenue, especially to our schools, is even more concerning as the developers of the Wildwood Luxury Apartments were given 10 years of tax abatements. Commissioner Healthley, you asked at a prior hearing why this developer would have a homeowners association when there are no homeowners, only home renters and a business owner, the landlord. The Secretary of State shows that Mr. Levinson is the registered agent not only of Benton Home Builders, but over 30 LLCs, including several of their developments in St. Charles County. Several of these developments also have incorporated HOAs as a 523 nonprofit corporation, which it holds title to portions of their developments. IRS code 523 allows HOAs to have tax exemption on real estate property held in their name as well as tax exempt status of certain portions of their income. There are many reasons to still deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newberry?
The next speaker is, uh, Ms. Parsons.
Good evening. Hello. My name is Julie Parsons and I live at 2425 Etherington Road in Ward eight. And, uh, I was a big opponent of the last proposed project and probably the same reasons, uh, we really don't want a rental community in our neighborhood. I very, and I have a few questions about this development, if it does go forward, um, in terms of construction. Will it be constructed all at the same time? Or will, you know, several units be, um, built and then rented out like they, like homeowners do? They get the funds to build a home and then they fill the home and then they move on to the next one. Um, we have one home being built across the street from our house that is, it's unsightly. It's their, their lot is full of debris. And everybody that passes by is like, what is it that they are building there? So I'm really concerned about all the potential, uh, construction coming down a road, especially dump trucks and large trucks that are bringing equipment for the construction areas. So I'm really concerned that there will be, you know, strict limits on construction traffic into the Canbury neighborhood should, should this go forward. Um, I just, that's all I want. And I know a lot of people have told me they are opposed to this project and I hope their, their voices will be heard at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newberry?
Chair, hopefully we do not have any, uh, speaker cards for this item, um, here in the room, but if we could just give a moment for the folks online, on Zoom to use the raise hand feature if you would like to speak. We just give that a few, few moments.
No?
Not seeing any.
Would it be appropriate for me to ask one more question? Is that okay? Okay. Uh, a question I would have would be because Etherington Road has been such a big conversation over the, uh, the years about how it's an older road and it's narrow and, um, a lot of traffic. How would the construction traffic, I'm talking to the large equipment, the earth moving equipment, the, the dump trucks and things, how would they access this property? And if they did use Etherington and damaged that road, um, which is a very good possibility, who would be responsible for repairing that road? Just?
Typically, a many of the district ordinance, the department prepares for the commission and the commission for the city council. We establish restrictions on construction traffic and the use of certain roads. In this instance, we would try as best as possible to direct them to Route 109, then Main Street to the site, avoiding Etherington Road and Canbury and the streets that are part of Canbury.
Okay. So if those construction vehicles damaged the road, for example, the center islands, the curbs on the central islands on Main Street, or if they ended up going down Etherington Road, who would be responsible for repairing the roads for those things?
Typically there is a special use permit that's issued by the Department of Public Works and there's an escrow associated with that. There's also an escrow process relative to the subdivision itself. So all in all, the process is we videotape the improvements before construction starts so that we know the current condition. And if there is damage and it's related to the project, then there's no question. It was not there when you started. It's there now. You're responsible. Ultimately, we hope that we get cooperation. Most of the time we do, but that's not to say all the time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Jackson?
My only follow-up, you require a bond on these things, right? Anyway.
There's a number of escrows. Bonds are typically not preferred. They're hard to obtain. Um, it's not like having letter of credit or cash. And those are the two that are more accessible and easier to draw upon if we need it.
And you have that record. Okay.
And Madam Chair, just one thing, um, when this all, when the previous proposal concluded with the denial of the, the appeal by city council, there was a question about the 12-month blackout period relative to any similar proposal being submitted. The department's impression was is that would apply once the appeal was denied. Both the city attorney and the department of planning reviewed the materials, the code. And for the most part, my understanding, and I concur with this, is that the receipt of the denial, the report from the Planning and Zoning Commission was done at the hearing on the appeal on May of 2024. The appeal was denied approximately one year later and that was the blackout period. And so that's why we're here tonight. If the residents feel they were lied to, I apologize. But again, we went through it very thoroughly. There was concurrence on the part of our attorney and the department. And that's why we're here today.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Okay. Do we have a motion? Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rubus made a motion to close the hearing. Do I have a second? Commissioner Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Uh, Mr. Newberry, would you like to read the next?
Yes. EZ 13 S 25, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission, care of Department of Planning, 16860 Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri. A request for the consideration and issuance of a subsequent recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding its consideration of a moratorium on the processing and or issuance of authorizations and associated permits for the demolition of historic elements as defined by the city's historic survey due to the city's historic preservation commission completing Wildwood's first historic preservation plan, which is intended to provide guidance and steps to assist private owners of these assets in preserving them through their guidance and steps to assist, excuse me, through their rehabilitation, restoration and reuse. This action would be in place for no longer than eight months from the date of the city council's action on the approving ordinance for the same all wards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, tonight for your consideration, the department is presenting a request. The request is prompted by two things that are underway simultaneously at this time. The first is onerous. Recently, Mary Cliff resident, which was located on the Mariner's Retreat Center site, was demolished. The Mary Cliff residents had a very, very long history in excess of 125 years. It had, in many instances, some of the key elements that any historic asset would have that would be listed with the National Park Service, the state of Missouri, St. Louis County and the city of Wildwood. The owners of the Mariner's Retreat Center did allow the city of Wildwood and its Historic Preservation Commission time to try to find options in terms of its preservation. Options were presented and ultimately those options were not sufficient for the owners of the property to forego the demolition. The demolition has occurred and the asset is lost forever. Along with that particular instance, there is the JP Connell House at Route 100 and State Highway T. Another prime example of a historic asset that could be rehabilitated and reused. The owners of the property, which are the developers of St. Albans, want to demolish it. Again, to their credit, they have given ample time to find options from the city. The city has offered those options and most recently the request was asked for the demolition permit to be issued. Fortunately, there appears to be an entity that has stepped in, submitted a contract and does now intend to try to rehabilitate the home and turn the remainder of the property into a cattle ranch. Positive. Positive. Out on the horizon is the LaSalle Retreat Center, probably one of the most important historic assets in all of the region. We don't know the future of that. It is on the market for sale. And for all intents and purposes, the department feels it's a property that's in peril. So that's the one thing that we're dealing with right now. Not just homes that are just 75 years old, that have not been maintained, fallen into disarray, and are in the best interest of the community to have removed. And we're seeing these examples of historic assets that cannot be replaced and have been part of the community for a hundred or more years. While that is all being, being managed, the city of Wildwood, through its city council and its Historic Preservation Commission, has begun the city's first historic preservation plan. And part of that plan is to assess the priorities related to our assets and also to come up with strategies to help owners of these assets understand grants, tax credits, rehabilitation opportunities, et cetera, along with the city's incentives. That plan will be completed in about six to eight months and may hold keys to successful preservation of these assets. And so from that perspective, it seems from the city's perspective that if we have a plan that might ultimately help in our efforts and convince property owners of these assets to maybe consider another option, the thought was, why don't we wait till the plan is done? How do you institute that way? It's called a moratorium. And tonight, the department is presenting for public comment the, a recommendation for a moratorium on any further demolitions of any of the assets listed as part of our inventory. Until such time, the city council endorses and ratifies our preservation plan. With that plan in hand, the intent would be to be better prepared to address situations that have arisen like the Mary Cliff resident. The next step, if there is favorable responses from the Planning and Zoning Commission members tonight, is to prepare a resolution for your action at the next meeting. So if there are any questions of the department in this regard, certainly it will be glad to answer them at this time. Mr. Rubus, at one time, was a liaison to our Historic Preservation Commission and has been on the front line of some of the demolitions we've had to address. And so from that perspective, he may be able to add more information from a different view. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Commissioner Jackson?
I, I had to miss the last 10-year planning. Surely this will be part of the 10-year plan proposal. This will be inputted into that.
As you know, when we were in the planning element of our master plan, we spent a great deal of time talking about historic preservation and steps. In fact, we identified at least three new steps to add to the plan. And that was just with regards to the objective and not the policies. So yes, we have endorsed the development of the plan. And the group, the volunteer group doing the master plan update have also basically endorsed doing more to preserve these assets than we have been in the past.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So you'll see it again.
Commissioner Rubus?
I, I was on the commission when we dealt with Mary Cliff. And that was really a tragic thing that, that was, had a lot of history to it. It was a subject of a bestselling book. And I understand the problem. The, the owners couldn't afford to keep, keep the building up. And we tried to come up with some options for them. And unfortunately, it didn't work out. There was no angel that stepped in to, to purchase the property so that it could be preserved. But one of the problems with our historic preservation is we don't really have any teeth to force anybody to do anything. All we can do is cajole, suggest. And I think this plan that we're in the process of developing will bring in some new ideas, especially is what other municipalities, governmental agencies that have control over it, what do they do? And, you know, I hope that there's some way LaSalle, the JB Connell House, and the, what was the third one that you talked about?
Well, we lost the Mary Cliff residence already.
We, we lost the Pond Hotel, which
Yes.
was really part of this area, the pond of, of a portion of Wildwood. And it was gone by a process we call demolition by neglect. The owner just wouldn't do anything to it. He knew that it was in bad shape and it finally collapsed on itself. And we had, we lost it. So I, I'm, I would be in favor of a moratorium. And until we get a plan, and, and maybe, maybe we won't be able to solve the problem. But at least this will give us some time to maybe make ourselves smarter than we are today about historic preservation.
Thank you. Commissioner Rubus. Anyone else? Mr. Newberry?
Madam Chair, we received one speaker card in council chambers from Ms. Link.
Okay. Commissioner Boren, I see you. I'll get you next.
One of the many things that makes Wildwood such a uniquely beautiful place in which to live is that we still have many of our historic buildings. These buildings still exist thanks to the founders of our city who had the vision to incorporate and took the extraordinary effort to do so. Part of this vision was establishing the Historic Preservation Commission to help ensure the preservation of these one-of-a-kind assets. The Wildwood Historical Society works with the city to provide valuable local historical information on these properties, some of which is housed only in our library and museum. Historical assets generally won't be preserved unless their historical value is known. St. Louis County Assessor lists a year-built of properties within their jurisdiction. However, the older the structure, the more likely the assessor is to underestimate the age. Henken House, home of the Wildwood Historical Society, we know was built circa 1852, but the assessor lists it as built in 1930. I recently met a woman in her 70s who grew up in a home near Henken House, which the assessor lists as being built in 1959, who said that the house was at least 75 years old when her parents bought it in the 1940s. In Town and Country, during a demolition in the 1990s, a pre-Civil War log cabin was discovered as the original structure of a house that was listed as being built in the 1950s. Luckily, the builder recognized the historic value and it was moved to Dreis Park. Preservation of our historical assets is an imperative part of ensuring preservation of our own unique history and assets for future regeneration, which is, which have miraculously survived until this day. We only preserve what we value and we only value things if we know their important history. Civic planning with historic preservation in mind and rezoning and the approval process requires not only attempting to ensure that historic properties are not demolished, but also keeping in mind the possible adverse effects of demolition and construction, as well as potential runoff and erosion on foundations of nearby historic properties. The assessor shows the north adjacent property to the Luxury Latitude Villas, listed as 2424 Etherington as a home that had been built in 1936. However, it is shown on the 1930, 1909, and 1878 plat maps at that exact location. Thank you to the city of Wildwood for trying to preserve our past.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Boren?
Mr. Vunich, could you speak a little more about the historic preservation plan that you were mentioning that would be available here in eight months or so? And specifically, what, what's the goal of the plan? Is, is the goal to offer those landowners options before they go down the road to demolition? Or is the goal for us to truly prevent them from destroying these homes? I'm not sure I fully understand what we're, what we're going to be doing in eight months.
Commissioner Boren, I will tell you that in many instances where we've talked about modifying our current historic preservation and restoration code to make it more mandatory, they have not been, they have not been supported. The thought is, is that the true benefit of historic preservation should be a partnership between the governmental entity, in this case, the city, and the property owner. So in 2014, when we did a major update of our regulations relative to this subject area, that was the first question that was asked. Should we move from a voluntary approach to something else? And it was a resounding no. We think we can make this work and do a good job with the cooperation of the property owners. What the plan is intended to do is to address a number of different components of historic preservation. But in the case of the moratorium and trying to work better with the property owner in terms of preservation, rehabilitation, reuse, is to kind of gather together all those different grants, tax credit programs, incentive packages that are available, and put them in one place. And then once in that place, ensuring that they are up to date each and every month, each and every year, et cetera. There are successful ways to do this process. It's not to say that we haven't. But for the most part, when someone comes to us and asks what's available, we give them multiple sheets of things. We send them to the state Historic Preservation Office. We send them to the National Park Service. And the intent of the plan is to bring it more closer to home and give us the tools to make that first impression a good impression.
Thank you. I, I'm not against a moratorium at all. However, I, I do believe it should be a little more limiting in scope. If I understood what I read correctly, it was 75 years, which would only be back to anything constructed prior to 1950. Is that correct?
Yes. The way our code reads now, Commissioner Boren, any property over 75 years of age has been surveyed and is part of our inventory. That is approximately about 450 of the 13,000 lots that exist, so to speak, in Wildwood.
I mean, 19, 1950, 1949, that, you know, I'm not sure that was my understanding of historic. I would be under the impression that, you know, to be truly historic, something might need to be more like 100 or 125 years old, you know, possibly built prior to 1900, you know, that still be in salvageable condition. And, and that it would have the potential to be economically viable if it is, you know, retained and, and, and kept up, you know. But, you know, in general, I'm in favor of it as long as it's, I'm not sure about 1950. That, that concerns me a little.
Well, Commissioner Boren, I can give you a kind of a fun fact. The National Park Service actually has it at 50 years. So we're 25 years plus. And there's been discussion about lowering it. But for the most part, when you start thinking about if we, you know, if we do 50 years, that means homes built in 1975 would be historic. And that would be like the Evergreen subdivision and West Glen Farms. And although they're wonderful subdivisions, I don't know if they're ready to be designated historic at this time.
I agree. I feel the same way about the 1940s and 30s. But we'll, we'll agree to disagree on that one. But thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
My pleasure, sir.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Chair. And I just wanted to quickly note just some of the things that others, I, we've been doing some research. The department, the departments have been doing this. And this obviously needs to be investigated further as part of the historic master plan. But just some of the things that you could introduce, not necessarily saying these need to proceed. But really, you know, right now, there's not too much documentation that a property owner would need to provide to destroy some of these assets like the Mary Cliff. Some things cities, you know, around us and also across the country have been able to, you know, enact is that you have to prove some type of financial hardship or financial need that the building can't remain there because it costs too much to be able to keep maintaining. It has provisions in there. Some cities have provisions in there that pretty much address if there's individuals that are, you know, letting the property go on purpose in order for them to obviously get the demo permit allowed. There's also, you can look at it like Mr. Vunich had mentioned. Is it voluntary or involuntary? There's, obviously that discussion is much more widespread. But just wanted to note a couple of things that this moratorium, while also doing the historic master, historic preservation master plan, will allow the department time and also the team time with the consultant to be able to come up with some recommendations to bring back for this group's consideration and ultimately the city council. So just more so just trying to help before we get another Mary Cliff that would come in relatively soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion? Mr. Newberry, do we have any comments?
One moment. I don't see any hand raised on Zoom and I only, I've announced the one speaker card that we received.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, to restate the motion, the department would respectfully request authorization to prepare a resolution relative to the commission's position on the moratorium for the next meeting.
I make a motion to approve. Sorry?
Okay. There we go. So we have a first by him and a second by him. Would you like a roll call vote?
Commissioner Boren?
No.
Was that a, sorry, can you restate that?
No, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Commissioner Clayton? Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubus?
Yes.
Chair Helfrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Garitano? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. For our letters of recommendation, Mr. Newberry? What Mr. Vunich is going to read?
Mr. Newberry will read and you'll have to, you'll be drawn on with the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
PZ 7-25, West Mill Wayland Custom Homes, care of Mike Wayland, 338 South Kirkwood Road, Suite 103, Kirkwood, Missouri, 63112. A request for a change in the zoning district designation of three, designations of three properties that form attractive land that is 1.74 acres in area from the R6A 4,000 square foot Residence District, Town Center Neighborhood General District, to the R4 7,500 square foot Residence District, which are identified by the following street addresses and St. Louis County locator numbers, 17002, 17006, and 170, 17010, New College Avenue, and 24V 420351, 24V 420340, 24V 42033, Ward 8. PZ 7A-25, West Mill Wayland Custom Homes, care of Mike Wayland, 338 South Kirkwood Road, Suite 103, Kirkwood, Missouri, 63112. A request for a change in zoning district designation of two properties that form a tract of land that is six acres in area from the In Union Urban Residence District, suburban residential area, to the R1A 22,000 square foot Residence District, which are identified by the following street addresses, 2623, 2631, West Avenue, and St. Louis County locator number, numbers 24V 420153 and 24V 420186, also located within Ward 8. And then PZ 7B-25, West Mill Wayland Custom Homes, care of Mike Wayland, 338 South Kirkwood Road, Suite 103, Kirkwood, Missouri, 63112. A request for the application of a planned residential development overlay district, PRD, in the R1A 22,000 square foot Residence District and the R4 7,500 square foot Residence District for an overall and combined tracts of land totaling a size 8.05 acres in area with the following street addresses and St. Louis County locator numbers, 17002, 17006, and 17010, New College Avenue, 2623, and 2631, West Avenue, 24V 420351, 24V... two-four-V four-two-zero-three-four-zero, two-four-V four-two-zero-three-three, two-four-V four-two-zero-one-five-three, and two-four-V four-two-zero-one-eight-six. Proposed use a total of seventeen detached single-family dwellings on individual lots of record with common ground areas, access accommodations, required public spaces, and stormwater management facilities, Ward eight.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Department of Planning has prepared for your consideration tonight the draft letter of recommendation reflecting your action that occurred at the last meeting of this body. That action was to support the components of the rezoning request as well as the application of the overlay district on this particular site. Given the site is approximately eight acres in size, and ultimately, under the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, would be authorized for up to sixteen single-family detached dwellings on individual lots. The unique feature of this particular property is a portion of it, approximately one-plus acre, is in town center, while the remaining seven acres is in the suburban residential area of the master plan. Ultimately, there'll be two types of dwellings constructed, both consistent with the designations under the master plan. At the conclusion of the discussion and prior to the vote at the October meeting, the petitioner asked if there was a potential for a seventeenth lot. The department met with the developer and also spent a great deal of time looking at the density calculations per the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And ultimately, the number came to sixteen point two, but we rounded down. And that means the recommendation as presented tonight remains at sixteen. Certainly, if there is a way to address the town center portion, that might be a benefit. But again, that would require the denial of the R four rezoning request and the retention of the R six A that is in place on the town center portion of the project's boundaries. Given that the vote from the Planning and Zoning Commission was to support the rezoning, the department felt it couldn't change that without at least identifying it tonight and receiving direction from the commission members themselves. So tonight, the letter of recommendation in draft form reflects the action of this commission and is ready to be forwarded on to City Council.
Commissioner Jackson?
So a motion covers A, B, and C. It's all combined. We're not, we're not taking one of those at a time. I was just, when I was reading the agenda.
Yes, it's, it's that collective process. We've got town center, we've got suburban. And then, to make it all work and ultimately achieve the sixteen lots, we need the overlay district. So without one, the other can't move forward, so to speak.
Right. And if the, and on the other part is the petitioner is wants seventeen, and we would have to deny it, are they okay with sixteen as presented or?
Well, certainly, Mr. Wayland is in attendance tonight. But we've talked it through. I, other than denying the first part, which is that seven dash twenty-five, which takes it from the R six A to the R four, there is no way to obtain that additional lot under the way it was advertised.
Commissioner Rubus, did you have something? Anyone? I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the part that you would say that we would need to deny, is it the row of houses there? And that's where the extra house would be?
If they can make it work. But as you can see, they're showing a stormwater management facility, generally speaking, in that area where that additional lot would go. So I don't know if it can all work.
Okay, yeah. So I'm looking at this, and this one that says revise submittal, is this the right one? Am I looking at the incorrect one? So if I count what's on here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So this drawing here shows seventeen.
That's wishful thinking.
So which one would get, would be?
Six, well, at this stage, there's five new urbanism lots, those in town center, and there'll be eleven of the regular lots versus twelve.
So we, if we, if we approve it as is, this drawing that's on the screen, we would lose one of those full-size houses. And if we deny the part, the first part that you talked about, that would deny the zoning change for the top five houses, and they would try to put one in there. But no matter what, we would still be down one full-size house. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes. And the reason all of this is occurring is that only in the non-urban areas of the city can you have private streets. Our master plan identifies town center and the suburban as having public streets. The original plan showed that street as private. That private nature does not require that amount of land area to be deducted for the determination of density. And when it became public, it has to be deducted. And regardless, if the code deems and require that, I can assure you that once eleven owners were in, in their homes and realized they had to maintain that street, a street that's built to a higher standard, a more expensive standard, they'd be knocking on the mayor's door and city council, asking it to become public after the fact. And then we'd have a problem because we have one extra lot that shouldn't be there. And so the safe approach and the approach that the department recommended in October is sixteen lots.
Okay, thank you. Anyone? Commissioner Jackson?
So if we approve this as is, as presented at sixteen, and if Mr. Wayland wanted to add the seventeen, he could, he would then withdraw and then resubmit? Is that how that would go down?
Actually, the city council could add the seventeenth lot if it shows.
Oh, sweet.
Because again, your, yours is a recommendation, and you're not denying anything at this stage. It's only under denial that there's a bit of a different.
And they still have time to figure it out. Great. Motion to approve is presented.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Rubus, seconds? Roll call vote? Any other discussion?
So, Mr. Vunich, does that, with the changing of the two different zonings, is that actually a master plan change?
Not in this case, because again, the town center boundary isn't being modified. The suburban isn't being modified. All we're doing is looking at what's allowed. And the town center portion is designated neighborhood general, which, and that description in the master plan says it can be anywhere roughly from the R one, one acre, up to the R six A.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubus?
Yes.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Chair Helfrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
And Mayor Garitano? Thank you.
Motion approved. Okay, thank you. Mr. Newberry?
I'm sure I'll be reading this one, sorry.
It's all right. Mr. Vunich, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. PZ two dash zero-three, amended, Tom and Leslie North, care of Stephen and Abby North, one-six-eight-two.
I think we're missing one. We missed.
I'm sorry. I jumped ahead. Mr. Newberry, please.
Thank you. PZ nine dash twenty-five, Field at Clouds End, LLC, eight-five-zero, Babbo Park Drive, Wildwood, Missouri, six-three-zero-zero-five. A request for the consideration of a conditional use permit, CUP, in the NU non-urban residence district and FPNU, Floodplain Non-Urban Residence District, for an eighteen-acre tract of land that is located on the southeast side of Babbo Park Drive, north of its intersection with Guy Park Drive. Street address, eight-four-zero and eight-five-zero, Babbo Park Drive. St. Louis County locator numbers, two-one-X six-four-zero-three-zero-nine and two-one-X six-four-zero-two-nine-one. Proposed use for sporting, horse boarding and training facility, including a riding stable and an indoor riding arena, Ward three.
Mr. Vunich?
My apologies to the commission. Got ahead of myself there. Madam Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Department of Planning has prepared for your consideration tonight the letter of recommendation regarding this requested conditional use permit. The letter of recommendation is in draft form and reflects your action on the matter from the October meeting. The department would note that it has made a couple of mistakes in the conditions of the conditional use permit. The department used the word consolidation relative to the existing tracts of land, and it should be adjustment. And the fifty-foot setback from the edge of Floodplain only applies to residential structures. And in this case, although the horses are very valuable and have great value, it is not a residential structure. So the department is presenting to you in final form the letter of recommendation that would ask that the word consolidation be made adjustment and the fifty-foot setback from the Floodplain be twenty-five. And with that, if those two changes are amenable to the commission members, the letter of recommendation can proceed forward to receipt and filing with our city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Anyone? Mr. Commissioner Rubus?
Yes, I'd make a motion that we approve with the adjustments that the planning department.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Clayton, seconds? Roll call vote or any discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubus?
Yes.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Helfrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
And Mayor Garitano? Thank you.
Motion approved. Okay, Mr. Vunich, you're up.
Well, thank you. And I practice, I should do this very well. The next item on the agenda is PZ two dash zero-three, amended, Tom and Leslie North, care of Stephen and Abby North, one-six-eight-two-eight, Manchester Road, Wildwood, Missouri, six-three-zero-four-zero. A request for the change in the zoning district designation of this zero-point-four acre property that is located on the south side of Manchester Road, west of Village Hills Parkway. Street address, one-six-eight-two-eight, Manchester Road, St. Louis County locator number, twenty-four-V sixty-three-zero-three-four-one, from the C eight planned commercial district, parenthetical ordinance number is seventeen-fifty, to the amended C eight planned commercial district, which would then allow the, for its use as a single-family dwelling, along with retaining the existing provisions for professional offices, as well as extending the timeframe for its connection to public sanitary sewer in lieu of the individual household treatment system that currently serves the site. Proposed use, professional offices and a single-family dwelling. And this particular property is located in Ward eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Mr. Newberry?
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the department is prepared for your consideration and information report with recommendation regarding this, what was just described into the record. Pulled up the, the location of the property on the aerial view here. It's that small blue square in the middle, just to remind you where the property is located. It's the existing blue house on Manchester Road that was a former insurance agency. Just to give some zoning history on the property, it was formerly zoned in NU non-urban residence district under the city's regulations. The home was built long before the city was incorporated. And the former property owner and petitioner petitioned the city to change its zoning designation from the NU non-urban residence district to the C eight planned commercial district to accommodate professional offices, again, specifically an insurance agency. That zoning was completed back in two thousand and three. And the facility has been in operation as a professional office since that time. As part of that zoning, the city put in a provision that the home, the structure that is, that was on a sanitary, individual sanitary sewer system, a septic system, be connected to the public sewer system within a year of its occupancy as a, as a professional office for commercial use. Between the time of the zoning approval and up until today, that connection has not been made. Several waivers were considered by the city for various reasons, including the difficulty with which it is to connect to the available public sewer, as well as the development pattern around the property not proceeding as was anticipated at the time that the, the change in zoning was approved. So recently, the property has changed hands. There are new owners, and they, those new owners contacted the city expressing that they would like to offer the structure as a single-family residence for rent in this instance, but the owners certainly might want to live there as well. They were advised that, that the current zoning, the C eight planned commercial district, only allows for professional offices. So this is the process we've entered into today to add to the permitted uses, to consider adding to the permitted uses a residential use of the property, as well as the retention of the allowance for the commercial uses. A second component, as Mr. Vunich described when he read it into the record, is the extension to, or a request to extend the requirement to connect to this public sanitary sewer, which is a component of the department's recommendation. So the department is recommending that the, that a residential type use be added to the permitted uses, but still retain the commercial zoning, the planned, C eight planned commercial district that would also allow for its future use as professional office if they chose to do that. But again, just adding the allowance to reutilize the existing structure as a single-family residence. And then regarding the second component of the request, the department would just like to emphasize that it will be important to connect this property to sanitary sewer in the future, which has been outlined in numerous reports that have been prepared by the department over the years. But it is stating in its recommendation and the conditions of the amended conditions that it not be required at this time and that it be, but that it be required if the surrounding area develops or if the existing septic system fails and cannot be repaired, it would have to be connected at that time. And then also in kind of some of the protections that are in place in the ordinance regarding the individual septic system is that yearly inspection reports be provided by the property owner to ensure that it's in, in working order as well. And with that, the department is putting forth a favorable recommendation to allow for a residential type use as an accessory use with the commercial use of this property, as well as the provisions that I've described regarding the connection to the sanitaries or to, to the public sanitary system. With that, the department concludes its presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Anyone? Mayor Garitano?
I'm prepared to make a motion to, to approve.
Okay, do we have a second? It's Councilmember Marshall? Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner.
So Travis or, or Mr. Vunich, the lot behind that, is that landlocked? I mean, if somebody wanted to build on the actual lot that follows behind that, over to the private road, is that even buildable? Or is that not, that's not part of that front property?
If I understand your question, Mr. Marshall, and apologize. That particular lot is abutted to the south by a portion of the property that was owned by New Community Church, so it's an L shape.
Okay.
And then further to the south, there's a strip of common ground that's part of the seven villages of Cherry Hills.
Interesting.
And that's the problem. When Tom and Leslie North first petitioned to rezone the property, they had to get an easement from the property owner at that time, Mr. Cross, and then another easement from the homeowners association in the seven villages of Cherry Hills, neither of which wanted to grant such easement. The other location of sanitary main is behind New Community Church along that blue line. That's a tributary, Drainage Tributary. They would have to have borne under Manchester Road and then go through either New Community Church or Mary Kay Courser's property. So you would have thought in the time that's passed, now almost twenty-plus years, some development would have happened on either side or across the street, but it really hasn't. So when we talked to the Norths, we thought, well, once, if something changes around you, it seems reasonable.
This, I remember that. I was just trying to figure out that back lot. It would have access to that private road, though, correct? It's not as if the North.
Yes, it's not landlocked.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Commissioner Rubus?
Is that owned by the new owners of the community?
Off that Mr. Marshall about, is that owned by the new owners of the community, the old community church property?
Yes, the, when the mosque became interested in the New Community Church property where the place of worship is located, New Community Church wouldn't sell that property without the other four acres going along with it.
So and as far as you know, there's no improvement or anything about what they might want to do with that?
Well, the owners of the mosque, the membership, proposed a development on that four acres. It was four, four-story buildings, like 160 units total. The Development and Zoning Review Committee, which is the mayor, Mr. Marshall, the two ward representatives and the chair of the commission, Brownlee said, that's not going to work. They have submitted a recent plan that has yet to be to, to the Development and Zoning Review Committee. And it's now 40 attached, single-family villas. And the intent is to basically sell those villas as owner-occupying.
If they did that, would that then create a sewer connection?
Yes, because in that instance, you, 40 villas, and I've said this in a review letter to the mosque leadership, there's too many on a four-acre site when you take into account public space, stormwater, parking, et cetera. But any number more than one would justify making the connection because they can access the connection, I think. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Do we have a, we don't have, do we have a motion? We have a motion, a second? Mr. Newberry, we do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubus?
Yes.
Commissioner Bourne?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Chair Helfrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Garitano? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We now have some new business to cover. Mr. Vunich is at the podium, so, or, but Mr. Newberry is going to read. Okay.
A request for the ongoing operation of an existing telecommunications tower and facility authorized by PZ 25-97 Sprint Spectrum LP, Marioness Retreat Center. Conditional use permit, CUP, and, and, and obtain the Planning and Zoning Commission's action on, in, excuse me, east side of State Route 109, south of Old State Road, under a one-year renewal allowed by the existing conditions of this site. Specific permit, Ward 6.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Department of Planning has prepared for your consideration a favorable recommendation regarding the extension of this conditional use permit to allow this particular telecommunications facility to stay in place and continue to provide service to this portion of Wildwood. The department did a site visit, and generally speaking, the conditions at the site were very good. We're missing a few landscaping elements, nothing too serious. So the department does have before you tonight a favorable recommendation. If the recommendation is supported by the Planning and Zoning Commission, we will see this again in November 2026. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Mayor Garitano?
Yeah, I think this is the typical routine annual renewal and believe the state doesn't give anyway much flexibility to cities, so I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rubus. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rubus?
Yes.
Commissioner Bourne?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Chair Helfrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
And Mayor Garitano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Newberry?
A review and determination regarding the renewal of an existing conditional use permit, CUP, in the amended C8 Plan Commercial District, grant advice, the city council be a resolution on May 13, 2002, for a telecommunications tower and related equipment shelter, PZ 16-99's Front Spectrum LP. The commission must consider renewing this permit on an annual basis. This facility is located on the north side of Clayton Road, east of Schrecker Road. St. Louis, first, excuse me, locator number 21U120327. Street address 16497 Clayton Road, Ward 2.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Good. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the department has prepared for your consideration tonight a recommendation report regal, relative to this particular request. The request is made by Crown Castle via T-Mobile. T-Mobile, a major provider of telecommunications services. And the request relates to the extent the antenna arrays can extend from the surface of the tower currently under the conditional, excuse me, under the amended C8 Plan Commercial District with a conditional use permit. That distance is limited to 18 inches. The petitioner is requesting 24 inches. The department is supportive of the request and is also asking the commission to allow it some flexibility. As telecommunications services mature now from 5G to 6G, we do not know exactly, at least the Department of Planning, some on the Dais May, what those antennas are going to look like. And so in this instance, the department is also recommending not only the 24 inches, but that the department have flexibility. If antenna arrays would grow up to 30 inches, thereby foregoing an immediate review by the commission and allowing the, that review occur internally with the Department of Planning and the Department of Public Works, saying that if over 30 inches, we would return to the commission and present the recommendation report. Do you have the photograph, any chance? So I, I know we've been at it for a bit, but there's a couple of photographs I want to show you. And I think they're important for you to see for a very positive reason.
This is near the cat.
I apologize. I thought it'd be a little quicker. Well, never mind, Mr. Newberry. In the packet of information, if you look on page 12 and 13, there's a couple of photographs that were provided by the department. One is from the center turn lane on Clayton Road, which I would not encourage you to do too often. But I was staged there and I took a picture of the south-facing area of the site. And as you can see from the photograph, what you all do works. That's why I wanted you to see it. You require landscaping. When landscaping matures, that's what it looks like. And other than the tip of the tower, you can't see the equipment shelter at all. And good job. The next is the page right after it. And that is the tower structure itself. And as you'll recall, originally, we required all of this stuff to be inside the tower, so it was not visible. Ultimately, through your guidance, we allowed different iterations of antenna to be added. And when you look at it, it's not that intrusive. In fact, it's a working tower that provides excellent communication services. So again, you've done a good job. I wanted you to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich.
Well, I could certainly, there are, if you go on the internet, you can get either side, but Mr. Jackson's RX. Not on cats.
People come back and says, you damaged my cat.
Do we have a motion? Commissioner Clayton?
Make a motion to approve as recommended.
We have a second? Councilmember Marshall?
Thank you.
Uh, do, do, would you like a roll call vote or? Roll call vote, Mr. Newberry?
Commissioner Bourne?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubus?
Yes.
Chair Helfrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Garitano? Thank you.
Okay, guys, we have one more item for consideration. Mr. Newberry?
Planning and Zoning Commission's preliminary consideration of the city's five-year capital improvement plan as required by Chapter 89 of the Missouri Revised Statutes, which states this administrative body must review and act on this planning program so as to ensure consistency with the city's master plan, all wards.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Madam Chair, the Department of Planning, along with assistance from the Department of Administration, our city administrator, Thomas Lee, and our director of public works, Rick Brown, have prepared for city council the five-year capital improvements plan. That plan must be reviewed and endorsed by the Planning and Zoning Commission under state statute, and that is your charge tonight. In the report, the department identifies certain major projects relative to all of the different disciplines, whether it be road, bridges, streets, trails, parks. The funding of all of this, Mr. Lee can go into detail as much as you'd like or as little. And Mr. Brown has stuck around with us, which we appreciate, to talk about any of the public works components. But I can assure you that a lot of work has gone into this via our city administrator, the mayor and city council, to ensure that we do quality projects within the bounds of our revenues and expenditures. And so tonight you have a report that I think the most part continues the tradition of Wildwood of doing quality projects through grants and capital improvement sales tax to the benefit of all of our residents. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lee and Mr. Brown to add anything they would like at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Uh, yes, Madam Chair, thank you so much for the introduction there, Mr. Vunich. And just wanted to add a quick, a couple of quick notes, some highlights as was recorded in the memorandum prepared for tonight. But a lot of the items that were originally prepared for 2026, they will be proceeding forward. I did want to note just the process that the city council has kind of painstakingly went through over the last year, going through our cap, five-year capital improvement fund and really putting it through a priority matrix. And this is a new system that we have put together. It is included in the attachment, the methodology and some ranking scores that were included for 2026. This process is supposed to simplify and streamline and really help the city keep within its constraints financially. Overall, we had been finding that we were overprogrammed in some of the upcoming years. So one thing we wanted to do was identify each project that was included in our five-year capital and then run it through this matrix while also assigning scores based off of 17 different, uh, excuse me, 17 different criterion. And those criterion are listed and have explanations on their weights included. That is page, just for your reference, if you're looking. The matrix is on page 12 and page 13, and the methodology follows there. That said, some projects did have to be removed from our five-year capital. The reason behind it, it's not necessarily that they are gone, they didn't disappear. They were placed on an unfunded needs list. And what this means is that these projects, without action from the council, will remain on this list. And they will serve as a repertoire for us to go back in the future and be able to pull projects out of almost a bullpen of different ideas that we know need to be done, but we just do not have the funding currently. So this is the real goal, and there's also an unfunded needs document that's included. It's the last attachment, the very bottom of the page, that explains the rationale, where the project recommendation came from. And the color coding, green, yellow, and red indicate tier one, tier two, and tier three. So that said, the department's available to answer any questions, but this has been a very methodol, methodological approach, and it has been pretty time-intensive. I appreciate the team's ability to come in and really work hard on getting this done. And overall, I'm happy to report that in the five years, we will have a positive fund balance at the end of each year for the next five years. And if grant opportunities do, um, do emerge, and for some of these projects, we can most definitely assume that some grant opportunities could be there. The department will start working and coordinating with separate committees to identify if there are any grants available, go after them, and that should potentially help us add more projects to the list, if possible. But a big emphasis and a big portion of the grading rubric is, is it included in our master plan? Is it included in the five-year strategic plan? And is it specifically identified as a goal? And then secondly, uh, is there external revenue? And just to give everyone an update, and I know this doesn't necessarily tie directly to the projects itself, but the city gets a little bit less than $3 million per year from its half-cent capital improvement sales tax. And that money is used in ti, in its entirety to fund all capital projects within the city. We do have a road and bridge fund that is dedicated to more so street maintenance, but not necessarily capital improvement. That said, going through these projects, it's, it's not fun having to remove them, but some of them. But at the end of the day, uh, to get the, get the projects in order and having expenditures be less than revenue, some difficult decisions had to be made. The council has been reviewing this every step of the way and more than happy to answer any questions if you have any on the documentation that's provided tonight. I wanted to make sure that our director of public works, if wanted to speak on any of the specific projects, or if you have questions on, on any of the specifics projects listed for 2026 or beyond, more than happy to answer tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, would you like to speak? No?
Thank you. I'll just say briefly, I would like to mention, so we do have our, uh, project, Old State Road Shared Use Path that we've been working on for quite a while now. That is going to be in front of council on Monday night for first reading. So we have a contractor that's been selected a low bid to Hill Construction. So we're hoping that after award of that through the city council, we'll be moving forward with construction shortly, sometime this winter. And then you should be seeing construction start on the Route 109 BA Roundabout. That project was awarded earlier this fall to Gershenson Construction. And we're hoping to have a pre-bid meeting here and, or excuse me, a pre-construction meeting here in a couple of weeks. We'd noticed to, but noticed to, uh, proceed. And with that, I'll address any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Uh, Chair, Commissioner Rubus?
On page three, the fiscal, the last column, fiscal year estimate year-end expenses. That's going to be spent this year for our fiscal year, or is that a, are we on calendar year?
That's if you're, oh, sorry.
I was just answering, we're on a calendar year, Mr. Rubus. I'll let Mr. Lee respond to the, the numbers.
Yes, and that is estimated. There could be a couple of slight changes, as in the right-of-way for Main Street extension. And a few of the other ones, let me see here, too. There are a few here that probably will not be reported when we do the end-of-year financial audit. Just based, we wanted to have those monies available in case we needed to make the purchase of right-of-way on the northern end of Main Street for the Main Street extension. So just a quick note there. But yes, this is luckily, um, somewhat in 2025, we had a ton of different federally funded projects come in at the same time, including, well, not necessarily federally, but, um, the Village Green Phase 1 expenditures tied to Village Green Phase 2, also having our high-friction surface treatment project that was added in late last year. And then on top of that, completing the entirety of the Manchester Taylor Road, uh, project as well. So we've had quite a few projects go out the door, not to mention we had to make direct payments to MoDOT in excess of what was initially required from them for the Route 100J turns and the Route 100 left turn lanes. So that said, that page is reflecting of what is anticipated for the end of fiscal year 2025.
Thank you. Mayor Garitano?
I was just gonna echo that, you know, a lot of great work went into this and, uh, you know, the council and knowing the work that the various committees put in to get to this point, I'm happy to make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Discussion?
Do we have a second?
No, I have a question.
Okay.
Are we, do I have to wait?
Do we need a second? Commissioner Clayton or Jackson? Okay, Commissioner Jackson seconds it, and then discussion, Mr. Cohen?
Yes, uh, in previous budgets, there was a number in there for pickleball courts in the town center. And I guess that's one of the items that's been cut. And if so, is there a chance that it might be there in 2027?
It has not been removed from the unfunded list. And certainly if in the future there is a grant opportunity or expenditures lessen and revenues increase, it's certainly on the list. It's not forgotten, but it's not in the next five-year plan. It's not forgotten, but it's not in the next five-year plan.
I I have a question. Oh, on on page thirteen, when I'm looking at this, the red, the item's in red. Line item number twenty six says Route one hundred one oh nine Sound Mitigation Pilot Program, and that's no longer in there. My question is, does that have anything to do with the properties that are being built at the corner of one hundred and one oh nine?
All of those sound mitigation steps are under the requirements of the ordinance the city council passed and will be done by Fisher Frickel.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubus?
Yes.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Chair Helfrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Garitano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any closing remarks?
We always appreciate your assistance and being here tonight, so thank you all.
Can I say something? I want to say.
Can we have a motion to see if Mr. Commissioner Jackson can say something? Go ahead.
I told everyone what a great meeting you ran. You did not, you run, you did not disappoint, right to the point, right? This is the second time in my entire tenure that you've done it when I was here. Excellent job. That's like.
Very much. Thank you very much. All right, can we have a? Thank you. Do we have a second? Mayor Garitano, all in favor? Thank you very much.